All right, welcome. We're back in session. Our first item on the agenda is a public hearing for special permit accessory dwelling at 8 Carver Avenue. And who is here to talk about 8 Carver Avenue? If you would please come forward, sir. Hi. Welcome. If you would identify yourself, please.
Yeah, I'm David Roycroft, owner of the property.
And if you would please tell the board what you would like to do?
Yeah, I was, um, left the house when my father passed about a year and a half ago, and recently got married to a woman in China. And we don't have the finances to build a new house or buy an existing house, so I took a small mortgage out on this house, and I'd like to build an accessory dwelling for her and I and our son to live in and continue to rent the main dwelling to pay the mortgage on the accessory dwelling.
And so you will live there?
Correct.
In part of this?
Yep, we'll be in the new building, and then I have a tenant in the older building.
Um, Karen?
So then, as soon as the accessory dwelling will become occupied, you will, you will be living there?
Correct.
Right now, you're not living there?
No, right now, I'm renting the house across the street.
Bill?
I'm up there.
You ready? That's it. Rebecca?
I'm up there.
Ben?
I don't have anything right now.
Steve?
Sorry, I've been traveling way too much here. So just explain to me, was there, was there another building that was being demolished here?
Yeah, there's this two-car garage in the rear of the property?
Okay.
That'll be taken out, and that's original with the, uh, the older house.
And then, um, are there two, there's two drives to this?
Driveways?
Two driveways?
There's an existing one that's been there from the original house, and I plan on putting a three-car directly in front of the addition, so there'll be, in essence, two for the older house and two for the new house.
And so we're thinking, Karen, there's adequate parking here?
Um, what's required is two for the accessory dwelling and ample parking for the primary, so if there's going to be two for, um, two for the accessory and two, two basically for the primary, then I would say that there's adequate parking.
And you've gone before the Sound Board of Appeals?
Yes.
And have they rendered their decision?
They did.
Yeah, we sent that out to, I think, yesterday.
Thank you.
Did not get to read that. Can you tell me, sort of paraphrase what they said? I apologize.
They, they basically said they didn't have a problem with it, um, and after review, the board found the following, that the proposed addition and raising of the shed, if constructed per the plan, will not create any new non-conformities, that to the extent that the proposed addition or raising of the shed, if constructed per the plan, intensifies any of the existing non-conformities, such intensification will not be substantially more detrimental to the surrounding neighborhood. So they made the findings that they need to make as the ZBA.
Okay. And just from a sort of blending in architectural point of view?
Mm-hmm.
If I look at this elevation, is this the old house?
Yes.
Right here? So this is the?
That's accessory dwelling.
This is the accessory dwelling?
And then that little common area will have a doorway to both houses.
This will.
And that's actually in addition to the old structure.
And so there's a main entrance this way and a main entrance that way?
There will be, yes.
And the, the other means of egress here is to the deck?
There's a door, yes, correct, facing the left side.
But there's no garage with this?
No.
Just a parking space?
Nope.
Okay. And the architectural connection across, is it all the same? It looks like it's all flabbed, is it all the same?
Well, right now, it's cedar shakes on the old house that have weathered, so they're that dark color.
Oh, okay.
And if I were to do that on the new house, they would never match.
Yeah.
So there's two options. One is, if I have the finances, I'd like to put on cedar impressions that look like cedar shingles, but, you know, consistent color. If not, then put the regular cedar shakes on the new structure and paint everything the same color.
Okay. But essentially, it'll have the same look and feel as the main house?
Correct, yeah.
And, um, I'm sorry, one other thing is, where are the butters to you?
Um...
Is there a drawing that shows that?
What, you're a plant lot, or is there somebody on?
Uh, there's somebody between me and the corner, so I'm kind, I'm sandwiched between two of butters, one on each side, and then...
So the one on the east side that butts Egypt Ave?
Mm-hmm.
They're likely the only entity who's sort of impacted by this, I guess.
Correct.
And, um, is there lighting on the deck? And if so, is it, I mean, is it managed so that we're not adding, you know, a lot of weight to the next property?
Absolutely. If anything, it would be lantern-style lights.
Okay.
This is the existing house. This is, this is the house on the side of where the, um, where the accessory dwelling is going to go.
So this is the existing house. It just flips around. And so this house here is on the west side, right? From what I'm... That's right?
Yes, correct.
You got it?
So this house that's on Egypt, right? With the house?
The whole fence around the perimeter? Yeah, that's on Egypt Ave.
They're all sort of adding things down that maybe...
They are, they just add an addition on Egypt Ave, actually.
Yes, I know.
Couple of houses down.
The Westland that you've got?
I'm sorry?
With, with, they did it with the Westland that you have.
Oh, did they? Yeah.
And are they going to be served by separate water mains?
I went down to the water department and the sewer department and spoke to them, and the water department said it's fine to tie into the existing main in the old house. Because that breezeway, it's going to have a full basement, so there's plenty of access through the ceiling, and the water main's right in the front of the house, and it's new, we just replaced it a month ago with a one-inch pipe as opposed to a...
But you do have to pay a fee of $8,000?
Yes.
To tie into the sewer?
They did tell me that.
Oh, so this, does the existing house tie into the sewer?
Yeah, yes, it's brand-new sewer. He had the house put on a foundation in the eighties, and I think at that time, they put in a new PVC pipe for the sewage and stuff, or when they tied it in.
Okay.
But they said I could tie into that inside the house.
I just, I thought of a couple of things.
Yes, go for it.
Um, is the, the basement is just going to be an unfinished kind of utility space?
At this point, yeah, yeah. I mean, at some point, it may become just a finished office, sitting room, you know, couch and a TV kind of a thing. It'll never be a, a living space like a bedroom or anything.
Yeah, because that's just one of the things with the, with the smaller houses, is the 750 square foot max.
Yeah.
So I was looking at the floor plan, it looks like if you finish the basement, then it might kind of get over that.
It was a roof hide, yeah.
Yeah. And then the other thing, this is more to ask Karen, is did this trigger any stormwater with the additional driveway and roof area or anything?
Um, theoretically, when I calculated it, no, but as I've been putting in the accessory dwellings, I'm putting the onus back on the applicant, that if it requires a stormwater, they have to come and get one.
Yeah, and I also, we talked about that when I brought the drawings down, and the new driveway would be a crushed shell, kind of a driveway with the, they have a grid system now that you bury first, and then shells fill that in, so they don't migrate out so much, and it'll have the, um, the cobblestone sides to it to keep it contained.
Is there much in the way of grade changes that is happening here?
None, it's pretty flat right across, yeah. If anything, it goes down a little bit towards the farther left side.
Okay. Okay.
Anything else from the board? Are you up for reading, or shall?
I'd just, I'd...
Okay. Rebecca, would you like to read?
Sure. Um, one second. I move to make the following finding of facts. Is that, do you want me to read? Right? One, on September 10th, 2019, David A. Roycroft applied for a special permit for an attached accessory dwelling on the property at 8 Carver Ave. Two, according to the Town of Situance Assessor's records, the property at 8 Carver Ave is owned by David A. Roycroft. Three, based on the floor plan submitted by the applicant, the floor area of the proposed accessory dwelling will be approximately 750 gross square feet of living area and a common entry area of 238 square feet. This is 57.5% of the total square footage of the primary dwelling, which is 100, 1,308 square feet, according to the application. This meets the size requirement of 530.2 feet of the zoning bylaw for accessory dwellings, as the bylaw allows 750 square feet or 40% of the total square footage of the primary dwelling, whichever is greater. The accessory dwelling is subordinate to the existing single-family home. Four, the accessory dwelling unit will be a complete separate housekeeping unit, and there will be only one accessory dwelling on the lot. Five, the property is in the residential R-3 zoning district. The proposed attached accessory dwelling structure meets all the required setbacks, building height, and yard requirements for a primary dwelling. Six, the proposed accessory dwelling is located on the east side of the primary dwelling. Access will be via a gravel walkway leading from the proposed new parking pad to the front door. Seven, the appearance of the accessory dwelling will be in keeping with the appearance of the primary dwelling, as both will be new siding and/or painted to match each other. New exterior stairs are to the side of the rear of the proposed dwelling. Eight, the plot plan of land in Situate, Mass. showing 8 Carver Ave shows an existing stone parking area of 14.3 wide and 14.9 long for the existing dwelling and a proposed parking area for the accessory dwelling. This parking would be for three cars and be made of porous geocell pavement with crushed shells as the cover material. This appears adequate to provide two parking spaces for the accessory dwelling. Ample parking appears to be provided. Nine, the owner has submitted a signed notarized statement that he will be occupying 8 Carver Ave as his primary residence. Ten, the accessory dwelling will be serviced by town water and municipal sewer. DPW requirements for water and sewer connections will be met. Eleven, the application meets the standard of the Situate zoning bylaws for an accessory dwelling special permit.
Okay, thank you. Any additions or corrections? Steve?
Just a couple of comments here, and item three, it says the accessory dwelling would be approximately 750. Um, I, I think we just need to be careful that nobody reads that as, well, 775 is approximately 750, right?
Yeah.
So I don't know if we can just say it will be...
Well, do you want, want me to take the number from the application?
Um, if, if we say it's no more than 750, is that, that's okay with me, I just don't want to, I don't want somebody to interpret this as...
On that note, is it 750 living area, or is it outside to outside? Or is it inside wall to inside wall?
You have to ask the S group here. I don't know how they do the, I don't know how they do the calculation, but I think it is floor area. What's it saying?
Floor area.
So it's living, actually living area?
Living area, yeah.
So no more than 750 gross square feet of living area?
No more.
And then, um...
The common entry area is not counted in the 750 square feet.
Yeah, I get that, yeah.
Yep.
Um, and then number five, I just sort of, the ZBA decision made me question whether, is this, is this accurate? I thought they, they said there was a non-conforming...
The old house is too close in the front. It doesn't have the correct setback in the front.
The attached accessory dwelling will meet all the requirements.
Okay. So we don't need, do we need to say anything about the ZBA decision here?
Um, I didn't think we did.
They're not changing the house.
They're not changing the house. The, the front setback from Carver Ave is going to be 30.7 feet proposed, so that meets, that's greater than 30 feet. The side yard and the rear yard are within the, the proper setbacks for, for, for a new dwelling.
Yeah, I'm just, I'm trying to follow the chain of events here, so why did we need to go to the ZBA?
They're increasing a non-conforming use?
Right.
By more than 20%.
Right.
Right.
That's why they had to go to get a Section 6 finding.
Right.
Okay.
Okay.
Right, so we couldn't approve the, this without it?
Right.
So that's why I'm saying, should we have a statement in here that says the ZBA, you know, has, has approved, or whatever we, whatever we need to say there?
Does he, I, I...
As a finding of fact, basically.
All right, I can write the ZBA, and I'll finesse the wording tomorrow, but the ZBA has rendered a, a Section 6 finding.
Yeah. That's it.
Well, wait a minute, I, um, there was a little...
Is there another pitch?
Yeah, um, number, number seven, the appearance of the accessory dwelling will be in keeping with the appearance of the primary dwelling, as both will have either new siding and/or be painted to match each other. Just...
I'll entertain a motion to accept that.
So who?
Second?
Second.
And I move to approve the special permit...
I need to go.
Oh, all those in favor?
Aye.
I'm sorry. I almost forget that one. I move to approve the special permit for accessory dwelling at 8 Carver Avenue for the following conditions, in addition to the standard conditions for accessory dwellings approved by the planning board after a public hearing on 12/17/15. One, except for any changes necessary to meet these conditions, any construction shall be substantial, shall substantially conform to plot plan of land in Situate, Mass., prepared for David Roycroft for 8 Carver Avenue dated September 5th, 2019, by Webby Engineering Associates, Inc., and architectural plans by Bob Burgess of Six Sheets, including one of six elevations, accessory dwelling, two of six first school plans, three of six foundation plan, four of six existing fuel plan, five of six sections, and six of six sheer walls elevation detail dated 8/29/19. Two, the number of bedrooms in the accessory dwelling is limited to two, in the location and size indicated on the floor plan submitted with the application. The number of bedrooms in the primary house is limited to three. Three, no further expansion of the accessory dwelling. Floor area is allowed without further review by the planning board. Four, upon occupancy of the accessory dwelling, the applicant shall provide a notarized affidavit that they are living in one of the dwelling units. A yearly certification that the owner occupies one of the dwelling units must be provided by March 1 yearly. Five, all requirements of the Board of Health, Building Department, Department of Public Works, Fire Department, and other town agencies must be met prior to occupancy of the accessory dwelling. Six, the accessory dwelling shall conform to all applicable standards in the building, plumbing, electrical, mechanical, fire, and health codes and bylaws. Seven, water connection must meet all requirements of the DPW water division for the accessory dwelling. Eight, sewer connections must meet all requirements of the DPW sewer division for accessory dwellings. Nine, any lighting installed shall be downlighting, not to shed light on other properties. Ten, construction shall not begin Friday, 7:00 AM weekdays, and any on Saturdays, and finish on seasonal later than 7:00 PM or sunset, whichever is earlier. No construction shall take place on Sundays or legal federal holidays. Construction includes idling of vehicles, delivery of materials to the site, and all other construction activities. Eleven, if there is an increase in the purveyed area of 25% or more, then a stormwater permit shall be needed according to the Town of Situate stormwater requirements. Twelve, runoff from the proposed accessory dwelling shall not be increased from the property. Thirteen, erosion and sedimentation control devices shall be installed to prevent any erosion or sedimentation from leaving the site during construction. Silk sock shall be used. Comment from the board? First, I'll have a second to the motion.
Second.
Any comments?
I noticed one mistake here. Number one, um, I guess, at the end of it, it has to be up as updated through 10/23/19. They submitted a new plan yesterday, uh, didn't have a revision date, so, um, you know, whatever, it, you know, it shows that just a little bit of a covered roof over the, um, over the second entry going to the common area. So I want to know that, to note that that's the right plan that's been approved.
Which is October?
Yeah, 10/23/19.
Also, um, just the typo, shear is spelling for...
Yeah, right. I fixed that on one thing, so when, so I don't know, maybe it didn't save? I, I don't know.
Um, on item 12, runoff, um, I think that means both quantity and maximum velocity, right?
Mm-hmm.
So should we articulate that a little bit?
What, do you want to say rate and volume of runoff?
Volume and rate, right?
Okay.
And maximum rate? Because I think that's what the bylaw really says, right?
Anything else?
Anything good with me?
All right, I'll, um, entertain a second as amended. Second? All in favor?
Aye.
You're all set.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Enjoy.
Thank you.
All right, so there, after the decision is filed with the town clerk, there will be a 20-day appeal period.
Okay. Did I receive something in the mail? The confirmation?
No, you have to keep track of the dates yourself, but you will receive a copy of the decision in the mail, and then you'll get a sheet that tells you you need to come down, um, and pick up a certified copy before it's filed with the town, with the registry of the...
That's all.
Okay?
Public hearing. Yeah, dump seven...
Oh, we got a couple minutes in?
This passed right around now.
Sure.
The what? The two pictures I gave him.
It's very dangerous to leave it here.
That's what I'm asking now, before I suggest.
What? Oh, I don't know if you need to do that one, actually.
I don't think I do.
I just get sued.
That's the other side. It's quite a signature there.
It's gotten worse over time. You should be better.
Yeah, it also has, I have to say, 350...
Put it next to it.
Yeah. But, yeah.
By the time it was done, it was...
Scenic Road.
Scenic Road.
Which one is that? Karen, um, Scenic Road is which bylaw?
It's, uh, it's, it's not in there, it's under your, it's under the general bylaws.
Gotcha. All right, thank you so much. All right, we have a public hearing scheduled for 7:30, so if the people involved would like to let themselves situate, that would be great. Thank you.
Hi, good evening. I'm Bill Aronberger. I'm here tonight with my client, Katie Pettit, who has a new home that she quite, she just moved into with Paul Maribito.
Let me just interrupt you for one second, Mr. Aronberger. This is a Scenic Road public hearing for 424 Tilden Road.
Correct.
Thank you.
Thank you. And, in a nutshell, as the vacant lot that now contains a home, and there has been a stormwater permit issued for this, by the way, there's a swimming pool that's going to be built here, and nevertheless, there's a stone wall on the scenic road along the thing, and there was some debate from a surveying standpoint about whether this was in or out or whatever, so at the request and abundance of caution and with cooperative nature, we have filed for this permit. What is happening, and Karen has worked with Karen on this, and in a nutshell, this landscaping, which she own landscaping is, is going to do for Katie, probably in, well, in the spring, weather permitting, but nevertheless, what she's done is, she's had to remove part of the stone wall to put a driveway into her property, and that is going to be restored as part of the landscaping process come spring. So in a nutshell, uh, that's what it is.
Maybe the wall's going to be restored?
Correct.
Not, not where the driveway is, you're not restoring anything on the driveway, Rick.
No, correct. There'll, there'll be a 15-foot opening for the driveway, and other than that, it'll be fully restored.
Figure out what you restore.
All right, thank you.
Okay.
Karen?
Um, basically, there are, we're asking, their applicant is asking for the permanent removal of approximately 15 feet of stone wall for the, for a driveway opening, and more stone wall was removed during the construction process, and so the applicant has indicated that she would like to put that stone wall back, and so that is, um, that's what I've written in the motion.
All right, um, it's pretty self-explanatory. Any comment from the board? Rebecca?
Nope.
Ben?
Is the stone wall that's going to be rebuilt, going to be with the same kind of stockpiled stones that were taken, and kind of the same style, like a throne?
All the stones on site?
Yeah.
Has been removed.
No, new stone.
No.
It's the existing stone.
And it's not going to be like a...
Plus the 15 feet, right?
Correct.
And it'll be fabricated in the same manner that the existing historic walls are?
It's sort of a rubble stone wall.
Yeah.
Um, Bill? Got it? I have nothing, so, um...
I move that the planning board vote to approve the permanent post-construction removal of approximately 15 linear feet of stone wall for driveway entrance to a new single-family dwelling at 424 Tilden Road. The remainder of the stone wall that was temporarily removed for construction shall be replaced within six months of the date of this approval as we file with the town clerk.
Raise your second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
You're all set.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. It should all be reasonable. We have somebody coming in at quarter off, do we want to do some business?
Yeah, whatever.
For quarter off?
Yes.
Yeah, just in case, um, I don't know.
Is it a public hearing?
No, it's not, it's not a public hearing.
Well, then, if everybody's, if they're here, then we may as well go forward.
Say again?
We may as well go forward if the, um...
Yeah, we're here.
All right, excellent. We are having insignificant modification discussion and vote for Seaside at Situate. Five single-family houses are going to turn into five duplexes. Is that not correct?
Correct. And by way of introduction, Bill Aronberger, I'm here with Paul Brosia, Dave Buckley, and Keith Cohen, who I think, you know, I also, Katie Conrady is from Stantec, who actually wrote the revision of the stormwater report, which has been reviewed by Horstley and Witten, and I've seen that they concur with, uh, their analysis of this. But I'll let Dave Buckley speak to this, but there's been, uh, you know, a great demand, in, in a nutshell, procedurally, just to get this, what we're really doing here is... in a nutshell, procedurally, just to get this, what we're really doing here is we're modifying the stormwater permit because we, because at least statistically, and it shows that it's insignificant, but I also think it's good, not only is it good for the, for the developer here, because there's some great demand for 55 and older units, particularly in this proximity, but I think one of the things that Dave wants to show you also, it also allows by the conditions which were, where I spoke with Karen with, which we're in agreement with, actually to integrate this better with the West Side project, in that it's going to be the same housing, same types, but also, one of the particular things with the landscaping, final landscaping plans, which are subject under the conditions for Karen's approval, as opposed to having in, in single-family homes where homeowners can decide whether they're going to maintain stuff or not, these will all, these house lots will become part of the condominium, so they're under the same condominium association with the same maintenance of these. Dave, I don't know if you want to show them just the, the, yeah, single-family home rendering, which typical rendering, and.
So we need, yeah, as Bill was just saying, we need a rendering here just to kind of give you an illustrative example of what originally was proposed, and we intended to build across the street, more of our traditional, single-family homes, you could see some of them in states of class, or kind of normal estates, up on top. We did this digitally to give you exact reference visually of what we're, what the area is going to look like from the street view, the top being what was originally proposed, more of our traditional, single-family home that Toll Brothers is well-known for, and on the bottom is what would be proposed, which is the duplex unit, which would be the same units that we're already building across the street, same needs and methods, design styles, et cetera. This angle is taken from the same exact shot along the street, so in addition to getting some narrow widths to the building units, so we get more views in between those, those adjacent units, we're also slightly pushing them a little bit further back from the road as well, which gives us the opportunity to actually, at ball-strafting, give some extra enhanced landscaping and other decorative details, to be more in line with what we're doing already within the main body of the condominium development itself.
The only other things I'd add to that is upon approval with this board, we're also going to go to the conservation commission, because as you recall, they're also the cold storm, stormwater permitting authority here, and in addition to that, under our order of conditions, we're still within the same limit of work, but because of the sizing difference, actually, as Dave just said, we're moving the buildings back a little more from the road. One of the other things relating to this is, two things, there's actually, from a, from a sewer flow and water flow, it's actually less, and the reason is, under Title V, the four-bedroom house of 440 gallons, at the 55 and older, it's actually 300 gallons, so there's actually a sewer reduction in what we're proposing here. In addition to that, we have also agreed, per the condition, that all water and sewer fees, we're going to pay them upfront, because there has been some discussions with the town and their need of some capital to do some, I think, some related water and sewer projects. But I can answer any, any questions, and I think I'm a.
Do you have a layout, a site plan?
Yes.
So these are the five lots in question, which are currently denoted as lots 145, 146, 147, 148, and 149 under the current scheme. Lot 150 right there, which is the last lot in the corner of Sixth Avenue and Hadley, that lot is actually under construction for those of you that may have been on the site within the last month or two. That lot is going to remain, obviously, as we're constructing it, a single-family four-bedroom home, which will not be part of the condominium association, in addition to the two lots that are on Sixth Avenue as well. In addition, the one lot, which is a little bit off the page here, which is denoted as lot 144, that lot will also remain part of, remain single-family four-bedroom home, exclusive and not attached to the condominium development. So it's strictly just these five lots in the middle.
And so those lots, they'll pay condo fees, they'll use the clubhouse?
They'll access the clubhouse, they will pay condo fees, the landscape, as, as Bill just said, the landscaping will be maintained at the same level of standard as the rest of the condominium, the driveways will be plowed by the condominium development, and maintain, of course, the exteriors as well will be maintained by the condominium.
So can you just describe how they get access to the clubhouse, et cetera, from there?
Yeah, so, all of the, as far as how they get access to the clubhouse, well, I guess you have, you have one of two ways to get access to the clubhouse. Obviously, anyone could drive over there in automobile.
Yeah, I'm thinking walking.
But as far as walking, there is, there is a crosswalk that is going to be part of an activated beacon that's going in, into this project, it's part of the original plan, and the sidewalk runs down along this side of the street.
Okay.
So this is the sidewalk in the street, so they would come out, walk down the sidewalk, walk across the sidewalk that we will be installing as part of the project already, and next, there's an activated beacon that's there as well.
There's not a sidewalk on that other side, or is there?
Uh, not on the other side, no, there's not.
No, okay.
But it is, it's on this side of the street, so it works really well from a layout standpoint.
So that's central.
One of the main things, I also drove the design as well, just that, one thing we thought was nice as well, where we're keeping all of the existing proposed curb cuts just the same, so you get the, you don't get multitude of driveways hitting Hadley, it's still that same, you know, 125-foot feel of driveway down Hadley Road as well, so we thought that was a very nice aesthetic feel to the layout.
I'd like to clarify something, please. You have the sidewalk on the east side, and you have the crosswalk, and, but there is a sidewalk once they hit.
Yes.
On the other side?
So, once you get into the project site.
Yep.
There is an asphalt, well, there will be an asphalt sidewalk that carries all the way down into the project, up the road, and down into the front of the, into the clubhouse. In addition, there's also, and you can see the little tip of it here, there is a, a part of the walking trail network that bisects the sidewalk. They can walk down this walking trail and actually walk right to the backside of the pool itself. So they want to go right to the front, they can hook the sidewalk, or go to the pool, they can go down that walking trail. So they have two great means of access to amenities.
And there won't be any, kind of, if somebody wanted to cut cross-country there, it's pretty hard, right?
Yeah, so the grade.
It's like a drainage thing or something, right?
Yeah, there's drainage here, this, if you've seen the site now, this is part of the aesthetic grading, the site, make it look a little prettier, except for flat terrain, that is a berm that carries up about eight feet right now, so it's, it's a pretty steep. Its topography probably would not climb up and down, and it's going to get planted, it gets planted ultimately well, pretty heavily in that area.
And what's the grade look like in there with the five units? Is it any different? Are you changing it at all?
Very insignificant, so obviously, we have to change the grade to, to account for how, how the buildings lay out and the depth of the grade, so the, the grade pushes back a little bit, meaning that as the units are further back, the grade pulled back a little bit with it. As we just expressed in this, Katie had reviewed, that doesn't change the stormwater pattern as well, does not change the storm pattern. There are still walk-up units, as originally envisioned and planned, so topographically, they have not changed significantly.
How many units are in each building? Just two of them?
Just two.
So they're about half the size of that.
Half the size of what we're seeing here, I think.
What I'm driving by now.
Correct, half the size, yes. It would be two of those, essentially, two of those units put together.
Maybe a little bit bigger than half, but yeah, okay.
So does the, do the condo docs and drawings and all that kind of stuff have to be modified to integrate these five units?
They will be, yes. Yep, absolutely. They will be, and they have to be, to integrate the quantity of units, and we'll reference the parcel IDs as being part of the condominium ownership in the documents.
So they'll be limited by the condo docs to 55 and older?
They will be restricted to 55-plus, yes, absolutely.
What just happens from a legal standpoint, when you have condominiums as each duplex, or in case, yeah, the plot is finished, what happens is a phase, there's a phasing amendment that brings them in, and part of the reason, there's, there's a lot of reasons, but one of the reasons is, from an end-fiancé or Fannie Mae Freddie Mac situation, you can't have, as part of the condominium, a whole slew of half-built units. The only thing that they want that are officially part of that are finished units. So technically, you phase, even though the land is involved, you phase in the units as the occupancy permits are issued.
And they're individually metered on water and?
Yes. Yes.
Individual sewer ties?
Yes.
Bill?
Yeah, they just, what, what, give me a list of this, why, why it's an advantage to the town to do this?
By far, the biggest advantage is economics, by far. I mean, you're now taking five units that otherwise would have had schoolchildren potentially in the system, and now taking them completely off in perpetuity from ever having schoolchildren in the system, because children 18 years of age cannot live here or reside here. That's by far the largest advantage, is economics. You do now have two units as opposed to one, so without, you know, putting the words in the assessor's mouth, you're presumably going to have a higher asset value for two units on this lot versus just one unit, so your tax base goes up and your cost goes down, from an economic standpoint. As we just suggested, the stormwater analysis is basically no change, and from a stormwater, sewer standpoint, as Bill mentioned, is, is actually slight reduction. In addition, the fees collected would go up, and now the town is now collecting, you know, additional fees for different services, building permits, and sewer permits, et cetera, so there's extra fees being collected as well from the town.
And also, from each lot, there's, there's more than double the water and sewer fees.
And when you did the stormwater analysis, that incorporated all the single-family homes as well? Does that, I think that's how we did it last time, right?
Yes, so you, you can.
The stormwater analysis evaluated the entire property, the single-family homes and the townhomes.
Right. So when you dumped these five in and reran the analysis, it still included the other five single-family homes in the overall stormwater analysis?
Yes, the only two catchment areas that really were impacted by this.
Uh huh.
One of these lots is in, you know, one of the catchment, I guess it's a northern BVW, vegetated wetland, and then four of the lots are in the southern, just started draining toward the southern BVW, and in both cases, the, there was no increase, there's actually a slight decrease to both of those BVWs in the duplex scenario compared to the single-family home scenario.
Right. But the single-family homes were part of that analysis, too?
Yes, yes. Yeah, we included the entire development.
All right, Karen?
I sent you your, the consulting engineer did review the drainage calculations.
Yeah, I saw there.
And I sent you the report, and she concurs that there's really, there's really no change from the single-family development to the duplex, two-family type development.
Anything else you want to add?
In, in the end, they'll be fixing the sidewalk in front of, on the east side of Hadley Road, too, so that when all the construction is done, that'll be a nice sidewalk, so that people will be able to walk easily down the street.
And that's from where to where? On the east side, is, it's their fronting property?
It's, it's their fronting property, and it goes.
From Sixth Avenue.
Right, Sixth Av.
All the way down to their last single-family home?
Yes.
Whatever that is.
Yes.
No? Ben?
I understand the economics point that you brought up, but I also, one of the aspects of this project that always, I didn't really like was giving up the whole residential cluster district to be 55 and over, just from a planning perspective and having multi-generational housing within one area. So I guess I'm a little disheartened to see that we're going to get, we're losing single-family houses, which are not restricted to age, but that's just my opinion.
Karen?
I have to say that I do agree with, and you know how I feel, about 55 and older housing. I stated that early on. I understand what you're doing. I do wish that one or two of these, in order to benefit the town, would be affordable units, but that does not appear to be part of your program. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay, which is also unfortunate.
All right, is there anything else that the board has to say, or would like to say?
Is there, is there a rendering of like the streetscape? Like, I know you showed the, what a unit would look like next to the single-family, but like, kind of, just looks very linear right now.
Mm-hmm.
Like the four duplexes, just boom, 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 going up Hadley Road. It's going to be kind of.
Well, the rendering, which, I mean, as far as.
Kind of like.
It's rendering from the street.
Right, I guess more just that, that shows like a.
A differentiation between one and.
Like a landscape view, not just a single lot.
It would, it would be very hard to show that even in a 3D program, as you've got a pretty long stretch here.
Right.
One of the things you'll note is, not everything is straight, it's staggered, you can't break up that, so it's just a little bit. Just ever so much.
Right. Ever so slightly.
Ever so slightly.
One of the things you could do is ask for street.
And you stagger it more?
Yeah, I didn't.
Yeah. All right.
What happens with the, what is the, sort of the landscape plan here? Is there a plan?
So it's on multiple sheets here, so bear with me. So, first, along the streetscape is a very robust planting bed, it's a, we're integrating that same nice decorative, nice azac fence that we are going to be using the rest of the community, which is agricultural. It's a white azac product, down on the edge, it doesn't quite do justice.
And how far back from the, like, the sidewalk in the street is that?
Oh, boy. Uh, let's see here.
Is it like 20 or 30 feet, or is it?
This is 20's scale, so I'm just trying to find my, yeah, it's over, it's well over 20 feet, because that's 20-foot right away, easement for the sewer, and plus your sidewalk with the edge of asphalt, you have probably almost 30 feet, 25 to 30 feet to the edge of the planting bed. Then you get the planting bed, and then you get the sidewalk, and you have more planting that happens there. So that's the first level of planting that you get, and then.
Sidewalk in front of the planting?
Sidewalk's in front of the planting bed.
Okay, yeah.
And then planting beds behind the sidewalks will be lawn all the way to the edge of the street, and then each individual unit, so that's, you know, that planting bed's down here, to give you some scale, and of course, the sides of all the units get a robust planting plant down the whole side as well. So that's superimposed out on this.
Is there anything different that happens between the duplex and the single-family home?
Between the dup.
From a landscaping perspective? Or are you leaving it to the?
You mean from, you mean between here and here?
Yeah.
And on the other side, too.
So, on this side, there really isn't much that would need to happen, because if you may recall, the wetland actually comes up into this body, its face, and then zips back down, and this creates almost like this little isolated pocket, so you have a natural buffer that comes up in that area. Then on the backside there, that is, we have been in a lot of direct communication with that purchaser, and we would be working with that customer to decide what sort of, we'd be most likely doing some sort of hedge there, screening between the two properties, whether it ends up being any sort of fencing in the future or just pure screening, but yes, there'll be some sort of landscape buffer in between that one single-family lot and the, helping it delineate the people, the condominium property.
And is there lighting on the sidewalk?
We're doing, no, nothing on the sidewalk, no.
I just wondered if you've now created sort of a pedestrian path for those 10 duplexes across the street, and I'm wondering if we ought to have a little more lighting there.
In other words, your lampposts could be halfway between your landscape border and the sidewalk, so that it, there's some type of lighting as you walk along the sidewalk at nine o'clock at night on, in the summertime, from the pool?
Yeah, primarily for the, for the condo.
Yes.
Users, right?
Either that or you hand out flashlights.
I'm in favor of lighting.
Yeah, so am I.
Where are the streetlights already on Hadley? Where are they?
Are there any streetlights along here?
I don't think so.
No. Pretty dark.
Yes, there is a, I'm trying to think, I think there's one further down, though.
Yeah.
Actually, no. Probably. Then on the backside there, that is, we have been in a lot of direct communication with that purchaser, and we would be working with that customer to decide what sort of, we'd be most likely doing some sort of hedge there, screening between the two properties, whether it ends up being any sort of fencing in the future or just pure screening. But yes, there'll be some sort of landscape buffer in between that one single-family lot and the, helping it delineate for people, the condominium property.
And is there lighting on the sidewalk?
We're doing, no, nothing on the sidewalk, no.
I just wondered if you've now created sort of a pedestrian path for those ten duplexes across the street, and I'm wondering if we ought to have a little more lighting there.
In other words, your lamp posts could be halfway between your landscape border and the sidewalk, so that it, there's some type of lighting as you walk along the sidewalk at nine o'clock at night on, in the summertime from the pool?
Yeah, primarily for the, for the condo-
Yes.
Users, right?
Either that or you hand out flashlights.
I'm in favor of lighting.
Yeah, so am I.
Where are the streetlights already on Hadley? Where are they?
Are there any streetlights along here? I don't think so.
No. Pretty dark.
On the end of Sixth Avenue.
Yes, there is a, I'm trying to think, I think there's one further down, though.
Yeah, down-
Actually, no. I think it's on the pole. It's right by the old entrance.
Is there one there?
Yeah, it's right by the old entrance. Should have paid attention, it was left there. And of course, there's one down at the intersection, I believe it should be one down at the intersection of Sixth Avenue on the, on the pole there as well, which is a traditional layout. And there is, of course, the one light that we have is part of the end of the street, which is right there, it's the community itself, right there.
But we can't have all these people walking around in the dark.
I don't think there's going to be that, that significant of a, of a motion. For the, for starters, the pools are, a pool is not open after dark. That is sort of a traditional layout, timing.
You are creating a community, and people might like to walk up the hill to the community and back. I think it would behoove you to put in a couple of lights. Decorative, if you will, or ballards or something.
I would agree. I think there needs to be some walking lights there. It doesn't have to be significant, right? But I think it should be there, because you really are-
Do you mean along like the, the side of the sidewalk where the, where the, where the homes are?
Yes. Yeah, just so people coming out of the homes, you're-
You know, like, you mean like at the end of the driveway where it intersects?
Yes.
Yeah.
So that if you had a ballard, you don't necessarily have to have a lamp post or whatever. It could be solar, it could be anything that would enable someone walking on the street. It doesn't necessarily have to be someone from the condominiums, the townhouses. It could be anyone walking.
I'm just thinking that, that because they're part of the condominium association, they ought to have some kind of light to allow them to make their way down the sidewalk across the street.
How are you lighting your little roadways up in the condominium, up in the main portion? What are you doing along the roadways? Are you having lanterns?
The lantern's already installed as part of the original plan-
Okay.
At the intersection points only, as the original plan showed.
Are there, are there lights at the sort of end of the driveways or whatever?
No, there's no additional lighting throughout the community. The only lighting in the community is strictly intersection-based, and that's it. There's no sidewalk lights, there's nothing else within the community itself.
And no house has a lamp post midway?
No, no lamp posts, there's no lamp post installed anywhere in the community. There is lights that are getting installed on, you know, like at the front door or on the garage doors, but those are on and on-off switch, so they could all be on, or they, none of them could be on. It's all user preference, of course.
Okay. It's going to be a little dark in there.
It's dark at my house, yeah.
Yeah, it's dark where you are.
I think they ought to come back with some kind of plan here.
Yeah.
It's Hadley Road.
Right, and it's a main drag.
Yep.
So what do you think you can do to accommodate this?
Well, it, first off, I, my first comment or thought process is, no, we had not planned on any additional lighting. The sidewalk is fairly close to the street, so you would be not doing ballards along the sidewalk because they would not be on, they would be on town property.
Okay.
You'd have to put them substantially on the condo property, in which case you're now talking about streetlights more than ballards, and that is a completely different subject matter entirely. From my experience, most towns are, not to put words, but usually are not looking to add to light pollution to an area. They're looking to minimize it, especially to neighbors, because this neighbor may not want lights shining in their window. They may not like that. So we're traditionally not doing significant extra lighting, just from what we find. So that would be the first challenge in any sort of ballard and lighting discussion, if you will. There is, of course, lights that are on the buildings for normal entryways, but you're, you're looking at whatever back on the side of the units, et cetera.
When we're looking at that, those pictures right there, where is the entrance to, across the street from there?
The entrance is, is right here. That's the main entrance right there.
And what is, what's the lighting situation? You said there's something right there?
That, that entrance gets a, it's a downlight, so it, it's meant to illuminate the intersection point. It's mainly for vehicular safety. I'm not a lighting expert, but it's predominantly what they, they serve. So they're not, they're designed not to, like, they're not like a lantern that shines out, they shine down to, up to limit light pollution as well.
I think, I think that's all you need here on the sidewalk, is you don't need to have it shine out. You just need to illuminate the walk area, basically. I don't, I don't think you're talking about anything that's out of the ordinary, so to speak. Nor that would create a lot of light pollution.
All right, you, um, Patty, you're in a condominium association. Are there any streetlights in there?
Yes. But that was part of the, as Bill, that was one of the conditions. Only four, but they're, they're there.
They're there.
Yeah.
Let me ask you a question. So I understand what the issue is, but if there was some type of, not necessarily five, but if you said at least a couple of them that are some type of downlights illuminate, illuminate streets or like whatever, is that what you're looking for?
Yes. It's very simple.
I think you could give this to a lighting person, and they could lay out a nice little plan. Two or three pole lights across that, those five units probably would do it, right? And, and when I say pole, I don't mean twenty feet, right?
I know what you mean.
It's probably a, a six-foot, you know, end-of-driveway type of light that you could do that would provide enough illumination.
The problem with that, like where I lamp, is that if you don't turn the light on, it's dark. I mean, that's, it's so, so it has to be something that's solar.
I'm not suggesting that you turn it on.
No, it's something like a solar thing or something, yeah.
Yeah. You should just be on a light sensor and keep going and on.
Yeah.
All right, um, okay.
So if we're talking out of the driveway, just looking at this plan, just talking out loud a little bit, this intersection is well served by, or should be served, in my opinion, enough by the light that is designed to be here right now. I feel that illuminate, that should illuminate sort of a, that, that should provide either some, a mild level lamp beam lighting or sort of this old stretch, if you will, in there. I would be a tiny bit reticent to do anything further in this direction for two reasons. One, there is still a lot that we're selling here, and there is, that is the closest point to one of the adjacent neighbors not knowing their position on light, and I do still believe there is a light there.
There's a street light there, yes.
I believe there's a street light there. So I think this size covered, from my perspective. If what we're talking about, and if it would satisfy the concern, if one, two, three, if on the, at the ends of these three driveways on the condo development, I install a, what I would call a lamp post. What you would normally, a lamp post, and I, I, we can call it design slightly, TBD, if you will, but it would be a traditional lamp post, something that would illuminate out, would certainly provide more than ample enough light that would radiate out, and it would be, of course, towards the end of the driveways on the condo development, but still able to shine out. I'd be fine to do, happy to do that. And I could put those on photo sensors, so that resolves the issue of on, off.
I have some language, if you want.
Oh, of course. Why am I not surprised?
So, no, we get to the end. It says, "Any lighting installed should be downlighting not to shed lighting abutting properties, except three lamp post lights shall be installed to illuminate the sidewalk. Such lighting plan," same language, "shall be reviewed and approved by the town planner prior to installation."
Perfect. That works. That was easy, wasn't it?
Yes.
Yes, okay. Yes, Ben?
I, so this is going back to the streetscape on the landscape plan. I appreciate the, the, the plan that you guys provided. I think it's like a nice mix and density of plantings. But one thing I think is going to really improve this streetscape is the street trees and the shade trees. And on, on the current plan, it's kind of, it's like grayed out, and it says, "Street tree. See overall landscape plan for species and locations." So I just want to confirm that where in fact there are going to be street or shade trees, whatever you call them, that are going to be installed as part of this redesign of these lots and be included in the landscape plan. And maybe that should be shown, actually called out on this new plan when you do the final landscape set for the contractor or whatever.
Well, the, all the species of trees are labeled on this plan, if you-
Yeah, I think what the landscape architects may, must be referring to is that they're saying for the street trees, look at the, the big set from the initial permitting package. That's my guess, I don't-
So then I think maybe you want to request an additional, additional street trees for this area over here-
Yeah, and I don't-
And add that as part of the end of that, end of condition nine.
Yeah, and I don't even think it's an additional. I think it's, it's on here, it's just not being very specific. It just says, "Street tree. See overall landscape plan for species and location."
Oh, yeah.
Number nine already covers it anyhow, because it's subject to, you know, it shall be reviewed and approved by the town planner.
So I, I don't, is that a different drawing than that one up there?
It shouldn't be. This is what we re-mailed.
I don't see the street trees.
It's-
Are they labeled on there? Can you point those out?
As far as, that I would consider, street trees, I mean-
No, no, they're labeled as they're on.
It's not, it's grayed. It's like one layer beneath the, the plan that's showing on there. You, you can see the text on the road. It says, "Street tree" over to the left, in the left third of the street of Hadley Road. The text in the middle.
Yeah.
Street trees, see detail. Oh, okay.
Yep.
So is it just showing one there, or is it, no, it's showing multiple?
There's one at each driveway.
All right, okay, okay. So those are in the original?
I don't know. That's what I want to confirm.
Okay, well, we should get that confirmed.
Well, Karen's in charge of the landscape overall, right?
Right, but why don't we clarify it at the end of this and say, "With street trees at each drive per the plan." And so that way, if you, you get your point, and then they'll have to submit, you know, the final thing.
Yeah, and the only reason I bring it up is because all the trees called out in here are, they're, they're specimen, they're small specimen trees. There's no shade trees or large street trees called out on this plan right now.
So those would be called out on the other plan, then?
Well, according to this, yeah.
Right, so, yeah, we should just get that. It probably makes sense just to transfer it over, just show it here.
All right, is everybody all set here?
Are you going to take any public comment?
Public comment?
Okay, all right.
You don't want me just do it?
No.
Okay. I move to approve the conversion of five single-family lots, one forty-five to one forty-nine along Hadley Road, to five duplex two-family units on these said lots as an insignificant change as each of the five lots contain over twenty thousand square feet of land area, which is double the lot area of ten thousand square feet of upland in the residential R-three zoning district as required for two-family dwelling under the Situate zoning bylaw, section four thirty-one, with the following additions. One, no additional single-family homes on Hadley Road or Longley Road permitted as part of the Seaside at Situate development shall be converted to two-family dwellings. Two, the two-family duplex homes shall be constructed per the Seaside at Situate Twins grading plan prepared by STANTEC dated ten, ten, nineteen, and per the memorandum prepared by STANTEC dated ten, four, nineteen, detailing that there is no impact to the stormwater management system as currently approved by the town. Any additional plan changes shall be submitted to the town planner for review and approval prior to implementation. Three, only one driveway is allowed per each two-family dwelling, dwelling lot. In the locations shown on the attached plan, there shall be no additional driveways for any of the two-family lots in the future. Four, no additional bedrooms are allowed in the two-family dwelling units beyond the two for each unit on the lot as there were to be four bedrooms for each of the single-family houses. Five, the duplex two-family unit type shall be the same as those previously approved for Seaside at Situate project. Six, the five two-family dwelling units shall be part of the Seaside at Situate Condominium Association. Seven, water and sewer fees for the additional five units shall be paid in a lump sum prior to any building permit being issued for the two-family dwelling units. Proof of payment shall be provided to the town planner, town engineer, and building commissioner. Eight, the two-family dwelling units shall contain the same provision for the townhouse units that they be restricted for occupancy by persons fifty-five years of age or older. The master deed for the development shall be amended to include the additional two-family dwelling units prior to occupancy of any dwelling units for the project beside the model units. Nine, the proposed landscaping for the two-family units shall be reviewed and approved by the town planner prior to installation. The landscaping shall be similar to the plans prepared by ESE consultants dated nine, eleven, nineteen, entitled Seaside at Situate Twins for Singles and Twin Units Landscape Buffer Plan and Typical Lot Twin Units Landscape Plan dated eight, twenty, nineteen. And street trees will be at the end of each driveway. Ten, any lighting installed shall be downlighting to not shed light on abutting properties. And where, what, do we want to put here?
I'd say, when you say "and"
And.
And lamp post lights. Uh, three lamp post lights shall be installed to illuminate the sidewalk. And then such lighting plan, we'll go back to number nine, such lighting plan shall to be reviewed and approved by the town planner prior to installation.
Thank you. Eleven, underground irrigation systems are prohibited from connecting to the town's water distribution system or in any manner use municipal water. All irrigation systems must be supplied by private well sources at the expense of the homeowners' association for the town, townhome property and individual homeowners for the single-family homes property. Violations of this policy shall result in a fine to the property owner with an equal fine levied on the installer of the system. Splinter, sprinkler connections to hose bibs supplied with domestic water provided by the town are also prohibited. All irrigation wells must meet the requirements of the Board of Health. Twelve, where this change requires permitting or licensing from any other local, state, or federal approval, it is hereby deemed a condition of this change. All necessary permits and approvals must be received prior to commencement of construction. Thirteen, any and all conditions approved under the original stormwater permit dated May seventeen, twenty eighteen are applicable here. Any additions, subtractions?
Should we, should we do a discussion first?
I'll have a second for discussion.
Second.
Okay, discussion?
Yeah, okay. We never really asked the question, but what is the plan for irrigating on that side? You're not going to, you can't run across the street, right, with any water, so?
No, we have sleeves actually in place when we did the utility, so we can run the irrigation over there, so it'll be-
It's coming from the other side?
Yep.
Okay. And then, I, I think on nine, you said shade trees at the end of each property. But I think we wanted to confirm that the shade trees, as specified in the original landscaping plan, will be at the end of each property, right?
I wrote something like, "Street tree species and location to be verified from master landscape plan set dated X, X." I don't remember what.
That's fine. That's fine.
All right.
So I thought you said the water and sewer fees, you're going to do them all at one time?
Said lump sum?
Yes, lump sum, yes.
Well, this only is the, the five units. Aren't you doing all 10 of the, of the, of the five?
So it's 10?
No, no, I'm talking about the 10 lots.
Yeah, it says five.
The other five single-family homes.
Yeah, it, it, it says five. We, we agreed to, to do the 10, so change that five to 10. Yeah. What, what item, Steve, was that?
Seven.
Seven, yeah, so additional, well, stormwater fees, instead of additional five units, just say, "For all 10 units."
Right.
Right?
It's just money.
And then somewhere on here, I'm not sure we got it, so I'm just asking a question here, we say that any and all conditions on number 13 under the original stormwater permit, shouldn't it also be any and all conditions under the, um, yeah, what the, what we call the other permit?
The special permit, right, for the...
It, it hap, you can't do that. I mean, that's why it has to be stormwater, is because what you're doing here from a legal standpoint is you're allowing a modification to the stormwater permit based on all these conditions which you set out, is because from a legal standpoint, from a legal standpoint, these units are not subject to a special permit. They're subject to a stormwater permit. So what we're doing is we're modifying the stormwater permit and setting these additional 13 conditions.
You just rolled these units into the special permit. That's what...
No, no, they didn't.
The special permit only applies to the east side of, of the Hadley Road. The, the stormwater permit applies to the east and the west side.
But it seems like you're now linking this to the east side.
We're, we're not linking...
To the west side, I mean.
The, the answer is, it's...
You're rolling them into the condominium association and all that, right?
Correct, but we didn't...
Why isn't that governed by the special permit?
Because the condominium association, the requirements, which again, we've linked into a lot of these provisions, but it can't technically, this is not, these lots are not part of the special permit to the extent these other things, we've agreed to all these conditions having to do with, uh, everything else. So in other words, that, that's probably the most important thing, that has to say stormwater permit.
That, it, it seems like we've sort of bastardized the whole thing then.
No.
Yeah, because we carved them out because you didn't want them as part of the special permit. Now you sort of want them in the special permit.
No, 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 we, we did not carve them out. We, they were A, they were A and R lots. They were never carved out at here because to be candid with you, every single thing we propose on there but for the stormwater permit is permitted under the bylaw already. And through, in a, you know, in a, in a collaborative manner, sitting with Karen and everyone else, these are all things that we thought, and again, one, it's good for the residents, but two, from the town, to embellish all these other things.
Those, those houses were never, ever part of the special permit, ever.
I know, we reviewed the whole thing as if they were.
No, we didn't.
Yes, we did. Yes, we did. We said, "We're going to look at this whole thing collectively, even though you split those out separately."
Right, and that's why the stormwater...
And now you're sort of trying to bring them back in, is what it feels like to me. You sort of changed the whole dynamic here.
You reviewed it for stormwater and grading and drainage as part of the whole special permit and erosion control, et cetera, but it was always, they were their separate beings because they were single-family homes.
So do we have all those things then for this? Erosion control and all that other stuff?
Yes.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
There'll, there'll be erosion control, right in the permit, it said that you have to have, uh, I'll pick one, stabilized construction entrance. You have to have those for the single-family homes. Erosion control, you have to have them for, and they, they are being constructed over there. So they do have stabilized construction entrance right now for the house on 6th Ave that's under construction. They do have erosion control over there too. And our consulting engineer, when he goes out there, does, they do look over there too.
Okay.
So it's...
And so had, where do we tie this into the, the condominium association? Is that covered under, is that enough under item six?
I believe so.
Yes, it is.
And number eight speaks to it too.
Yeah, such a name. Okay. All right, I stand corrected, whatever that. It really feels like we've, we've sort of left them out and then decided to bring them in at the last minute here.
I think we're okay.
I think we did it the other way around. We, we didn't leave them out. We brought them in, and now we're leaving them out.
Okay, all right.
I didn't follow that one.
We don't need to try. Okay, I'll entertain, uh, a second as amended, second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Yes.
Okay, so it's four to one.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Oh, and the location of the, uh, sign was ver, put in the field for, for stake and it's to be verified by the police tomorrow or early next week.
First, okay, super, thanks. Thank you.
All right, now we have all business, no business, et cetera, et cetera. All right, town meeting, assignment of zoning articles, signed by law.
Dan, can I just get your exact wording, what you read for the trees?
Yeah.
Just so I can, we can make sure we get it exactly how you wanted it.
Okay, yeah.
Thank you.
All right, who wants to say what at town meeting?
Um, so on the, um, on the signed by law, we came up with revised wording for the signed by law, but as everything was kind of vague to begin with, I don't think you really need to change your report, but if you want to just revote the report as, you know, uh, the report to town meeting to, you know, still be in support of it, um, we, we clarified the language. We hadn't gotten the language from town council. Now we have the language from town council and, um, I don't think it changes your report at all, but I have an abundance of caution. Town council thought you should revote your, um, report to town meeting.
All right, we do not meet again before town meeting, correct?
Right.
So, and it's not on the agenda to vote that tonight?
Yeah, signed by law report.
Yeah, it is. Okay, all right.
So you have to assign who's gonna, you know, do what article and, um, and then the signed by law report.
I love that everyone is speaking at once.
Vince at town meeting?
The fifth. You're out of town, right?
That's what I'm worried about.
Okay. First, um, I am going to read something here, and I move that the planning board reaffirm its vote from September 26, 2019 to approve the proposed changes to the signed by law to provide necessary legal adjustments to comply with the current case law, providing for temporary signage in all residential zones and removing church and civic group signs.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
John?
I'm not, because I wasn't here.
It's, um, you weren't here?
This is much better, I think.
Okay. So it's unanimous?
How, dare I ask, how did we change the signed by law?
We gave you, we gave you some red copies, we gave you some copies in your, um, we sent them to you by email.
Yeah, I was hoping somebody could paraphrase.
There was a loophole, wouldn't you say?
Yeah, there was a loophole.
There was a loophole, so if you were having a temporary sign, it seemed like you could use a temporary, you could then take the language for a political sign and use it during that time period for this, right around, you could go up and put 100 painting, you know, if you were a painter, 100 signs, so, anywhere.
During a political period?
Yes, yes, that's, to me, what the loophole was.
Yeah.
So that's what we didn't want.
Someone did.
Is that right? So that's the only correction we're making here?
Pretty much that's been fixed so that, with the new, with the new wording. Plus, we also added definitions in there to make it crystal clear, added definitions of banner, business establishment, and temporary sign, so that it would be clear.
Wait, this, I'm not sure it's fixed.
Where do we fix it? We, it looks like we eli, eliminated it.
I'm looking at what we rule. I'm looking at the, I'm sorry.
Town council thought that, I mean, thought that this wording would clean up the issue and, um, shouldn't be challengeable in, you know, in accordance with the case law that's been undergoing.
So the, the notion of political signs, et cetera, disappeared? So how is, how did it get corrected in here?
It's a temporary sign.
It's a temporary sign, okay.
And it's for a period beginning 60 days before a municipal, state, or federal election and for a time period not to exceed seven days after. There shall be no limit to the maximum number of temporary signs that may be displayed on a lot.
And who's going to...
So how did that fix the loophole that you talked about?
I, it didn't. I, I thought it did, but it didn't. I just kind of thought that's what was going to happen. And I hadn't read this one yet, Steve.
So what does this mean?
It's, there's, there's a loophole.
And what's the loophole?
That during that two months, you could take all your temporary signs for your business and put as many as you wanted on a lot. That's what the loophole is.
Is it not acceptable to say that for item number two, there's no limit to the maximum number of political signs or...
No, you can't say that. You can't say that.
You can't say that.
You can't say it. That's what's been cha, that's what's been, part of what's been challenged in court.
Right.
So then why don't we just take it out, the whole thing altogether?
Well, I think this helps us for this coming, um, election season. And if there has to be further cor, further corrections, then we'll have to do it in the spring.
I don't follow that.
Because we were going to be sued by the ACLU.
For, for what? Not allowing businesses to...
For, for political signs.
Because we initially had political signs were only to be put up 30 days prior to the election, and a candidate decided that that wasn't soon enough or was too late or whatever, and went to the ACLU and they came knocking at the door, so...
Well, I think part of it too was that if you won the primary or something, you could put it up sooner than other people could. So there was a disparity. Some people could put it up 60 days, some people could put it up 30 days, so it gave an unfair advantage to some candidates. That's the way the bylaw reads currently.
Yeah, that's, that's, that's wrong.
That's what we're trying to fix.
That's what?
I'm sorry, I didn't mean to...
I can see why that would be a problem.
Well, the primary, they're talking about having it, what, September 1st? And if whoever won wins the primary September 1st, the vote isn't until November, we could be looking at, um, John Smith's sign for the next three months. I mean, who needs that?
Right, but, I mean, there are certain rights that, you know...
I understand, but still in all, all right.
So, um, so as it's now proposed as rewritten, it's saying, at, at any time, 60 days before any municipal, federal, or state election, right?
Mm-hmm.
Up to and through seven days after that election, there's no limit to temporary signs of any kind.
That's kind of, that's kind of what it says, yep.
And what, they took that language from another town who, it was approved by someone? Is that correct? Yes.
Yes.
And who was going to explain this on the floor of town meeting?
I don't know who's going to do it.
Do we have to? Is that what you said? There will be questions. There are always questions. And we also have, okay, we have this, and then we have the housekeeping for the Greenbush Village overlay district.
Mm-hmm.
And we have the...
Hamrock.
Hamrock. And we all...
That's it.
That's it?
Three zoning articles.
That's enough.
That's enough.
All right. Are this, who wants to, don't everybody raise your hand?
I'll do one of them.
Why don't you do the sign?
Okay, I'll do the signs.
So we didn't really set out to correct the, the business that throws up 1,000 signs? That, that wasn't the purpose of that?
No, it wasn't.
That wasn't the purpose of that.
The purpose was to eliminate the definition of political sign?
Yes.
And that was why we got sued, was because it was a political sign?
Right, and to make it consist, to make it consistent with current case law, which current case law is, you know, you can't be discriminatory in your signs. So research was done from other towns, what the AG has approved for other towns, and this wording, in town council's opinion, is consistent with other towns and is defensible.
And so the only thing we're really doing is saying, "You can put up a sign in this election period. You can put up any sign you want, as many of any signs as you want."
But temporary signs.
Yeah.
Temporary signs.
But you can put up as many as you want, and it doesn't matter, it just so happens to be an election period, but anything can go up.
Pretty much.
We won't point that out at the town meeting.
Well, I mean...
Steve, you weren't here when all signs had to be on wheels, seriously?
All right.
Roller skates and everything else.
Roller skates.
Checkers.
Checkers.
They took a checker and nailed it to the bottom of each sign.
All right, so who's going to do, uh, the changes to the VCN?
We should make Brad do it. I'll do it.
Then there's Hamrock.
What changes are we making?
It's housekeeping.
It's a lot of housekeeping. We're...
I guess I haven't read the...
We're moving definitions into the definition section. We're clar, we're simplifying some tables, um, and we're trying to correct the, um, several typos to make it more user-friendly.
And we had to include, according to the attorney general, daycare.
Oh, the daycare. We had to make the correction from that. You can't just, you can't just change it from yes, from no to yes. You have to go through a town meeting vote.
So...
No to yes, meaning, I, I'm sorry, I didn't know the day.
The town, the attorney general disapproved a portion of the bylaw last spring because we said, "No, you couldn't have childcare in some of the VCN districts."
Oh.
And so that was, that was a no-no.
So you said, "You, you could have that approved, but it has to be approved at town meeting?"
Yes, you have to vote. So that's what we are indeed doing.
Okay, and Hamrock?
I can, did it last time, so maybe I'll get it right this time.
Yeah.
I think you got it right last time. It was political. Okay, so now we've resolved that issue.
Oh, people, Hamrock. No, don't have Brad do it.
All right, accounting.
I move to approve requisition of $9,515.68 to Harriman Associates for consulting services for the master plan, for $16.88 to WB Mason for office supplies, for $11.62 to WB Mason for office supplies, for $1,275 to... for one thousand two hundred and seventy-five dollars to Merrill Corporation for peer review services of four-four-three dash four-six-one, Chief Justice Cushing Road, for four hundred and fifty dollars to Merrill Corporation for peer review services for four-two-four Tilden Road, for one thousand three hundred and fifty dollars to Merrill Corporation for stormwater peer review of Fifty Two Otis Place.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And I move to approve the meeting minutes for October tenth, two thousand nineteen.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I didn't vote on it.
Hmm?
I didn't vote on it.
You were absent.
You were absent, okay. Lays on reports, who has anything to report?
Um, as most of you know, we had, uh, the first public topic workshop for the master plan this week on Tuesday evening. Um, the topic was resiliency. And, uh, it was, the meeting was well-attended. I think it went fairly well. I think we still haven't all debriefed about it, but probably gonna be doing that with Brad and the consultants this week. Um, but it was a good turnout, so that's a, a good sign that whatever sort of outreach we're starting to do as we ramp up is to, it's working better.
And they were younger people?
Yeah, it was a, it was a more diverse audience as well.
What would you say that sort of the takeaways were?
Um, it's, it's tough to say at this point because it was kind of like a participatory exercise where people put their own input in, and we haven't got the, the analysis from the consultant yet. But basically, we looked at, they really focused on the topic of, um, sea level rise as, uh, as a challenge to the resiliency of the town. And so they did an exercise where they put up maps showing different sea level rise projections and then had the participants, um, kind of put down their priority areas and also flag areas that perhaps aren't currently on the radar for, um, areas of concern. So I don't know what the key takeaways would be, maybe. Maybe that it's, it's tough to cover, we have to be a little bit more strategic. I, I, this is just my opinion, but, um, going forward with, with how we do the public participation because there's just, the topics are so broad. And it's, it's, it's like if we get too granular, then people say, oh, you didn't talk about X, Y, Z. And then also, I feel like if we stay too specific, we lose a lot of data that we otherwise could have captured while we have the bodies in the crowd. So, um, it, it, it'll be interesting to see what, what they come up with from this last meeting, but, um, it was-
Yeah, I meant to be there, I just was traveling, so.
Yeah, it was good. And the next one is the twelfth, November twelfth?
Yeah. Or is it November, yeah, November twelfth and December tenth?
I think that's right, yeah. I'll give an update before that, but.
November twelfth at, what time?
Probably six-thirty again at the, um, school.
Also to, um, Tuesday night, there is harbor community resilience.
Yeah.
Plan, and there's also the shelter thing is Tuesday night. That's going on. Anything, Bill?
No, traffic rules and regulations, spent a lot of time talking about the bus flow, student flow, student driving flow. And how to make that work.
And have they figured it out yet?
They have a proposal, they're gonna try.
And what is that?
It basically directs the little, the shortcut behind where the skating rink is.
Yeah.
Right, they're gonna take part of that one way. At a certain hour.
As it should be. I had suggested that to the principal a long time ago.
Because that presents a problem with the overflow.
They were gonna put a gate there, which was a mistake. Okay, um-
Did you ever decide to do anything over by Untold Brewing?
Over where?
Over by Untold Brewing, the, the brewery over there? They were talking about making that one way at one point, and-
No, still talk, but we haven't sat down and done it.
Yeah.
All right, um, anything else?
I thought of one thing, it's not, I don't have any updates from town boards or anything, but one thing that's very visually obvious in terms of planning and development in this town is the forty B Harron Brook Meadow project started over, um, on three A, going towards the North River. So, um, it's pretty-
That's what that is?
Yeah, so it's pretty jarring to see that all clear cut.
It is.
But, um, that's, so that's-
Talk about your sea level rise and resiliency, right? That's probably the first thing to go.
Sixty apartments. Sixty.
But for the public, just, this board never saw that project. I think there's a lot of, uh, misconception about what forty Bs are and how, how it works in our town charter and who sees them and all that stuff, so.
It's all about the zoning board of appeals, and that has been ongoing for at least ten years, not longer. And then the other forty B, which may or may not be coming forward, is over on Stockbridge Road.
Still? I think that's starting soon, or?
How many units do they have in there? Was it seventy-two?
It's, um, down to, I think-
Wasn't that already approved?
Yeah.
But then they keep modifying it.
I think it's sixty-eight now. It's duplexes.
It went from renting to owning to renting to, yep.
It's gone back and forth.
So I guess I, I missed it, and I apologize for that, but, um, when we first sort of started here, there was a discussion about, um, the water petition articles or whatever.
Right.
Did you guys review those? Have you seen them?
We saw them at the advisory board. They're, um, the citizens' petitions.
They're citizen petitions, so they're, they're in there, they're in the warrant. We, they wouldn't come to us. They wouldn't come to the planning board.
Can we?
The warrant is online right now, so you can read them from online.
I guess my question is, really goes to the question of, should the planning board have an opinion on these? I mean, we're not precluded from doing it, so I guess the question is-
You can have an opinion, um, it, you would have to decide your opinion. We are po- will post for six-thirty, so if you want to have an opinion, we could, you, we can post for then, and you can write, we can quickly write an opinion to be, um, to be spoken by the planning board.
I mean, what do you guys think?
Well, I agree with you, Steve. I think it all has to do with the process. I don't think it has to do with limiting the people. I think people are more concerned about what we have here.
I completely disagree with that characterization. And this is like, don't want anybody moving to situate. I, I think that's completely wrong. I think it's more about people being concerned about the natural resource and whether it's gonna be there for the long haul.
Right, and why is, why are we building if their water's still coming out brown?
That's another issue.
Yeah.
Or they're telling us, I know, or we're telling, or they're telling us we don't have enough water for that or the other thing.
Sort of like, you know, looking at a decision like Toll Brothers and saying, okay, we approved all the water usage there, but, you know, the way we did it was sort of this broad-brush, sort of, oh, it's, we'll do an annual average and maybe it'll be okay, right? And it sort of speaks to what we asked for in the water study, which was a methodology to evaluate, you know, our water resources in a way that if we have additions, we could determine what the real impact is gonna be, not what the sort of fuzzy fake impact's gonna be, right?
But then, to, to that point, Steve, money was theoretically allocated for this water study, and there's been one meeting that we know of to date.
Right, I don't know anything else about it at this point.
And nothing else has transpired. And I think that these two, not the, the water commissioners per se, but the other two articles, basically, I think are reactions to the fact that no one's following through on things. And it would appear the people are upset. There seems to be a water main break almost every week.
Every day.
Every day, whatever. Here, we're supposed to have this water study, and where is it? We don't know where it is. And, and people feel that there is truly a lack of communication from town hall about what's going on or who's doing what.
Well, I can send an email tomorrow, and I will copy, I will copy you. And when I send the email, I'll ask what the status of the water study is.
And send it to the world.
I, I would like to, you say the warrants, the, the articles that we're talking about are online somewhere?
Yes. I have it in my car, if you want me to go get them.
Could I ask you to do one more thing? It's like, just take those, what is it, just one article, or is it two?
Three, right.
Could you just put them in an email and attach them?
Yeah.
So I don't have to figure out how to get to them.
I will give it to you when we walk out.
Well, I, I'm thinking about anybody else who wants to see it too, so.
I picked it up at town, in the clerk's office, I can get more.
I mean, I'd be happy to have it, but.
I will, I will put together a document with those three articles.
Okay.
And I believe they're the last ones in the warrant. There's like fourteen articles, I believe. Ours are six, seven, and eight. I, I don't quote me on that off, uh, the top of my head. Um, but then there's some others in there too. But I will try to get that out to you tomorrow.
CPC, um, has moved-
Thank you.
Sixty-five thousand dollars or whatever, I can't remember the exact number, to finish the canopy up in North Situate.
Eighty-five.
Eighty-five. And then, um-
You mean on the train station?
Yes, finish that off. And then some money for markers. Those three markers in Situate that they want to put things on. EDC met Monday night.
I see the dog park's open, huh?
Dog park is open. And then there's, there was a bit of a kerfuffle because people are bringing their children into the dog park with the dogs. And the children aren't supposed to really be there, or baby carriages, in the dog park, so.
So either, well, either take the kid or take the dog.
Kids' park next door. So you can make one run-
We just need one more fence.
So there was that issue.
But there wasn't big kids and little kids, though.
You can go to the transfer station, drop the kids and the dog along.
So, anyway.
What would happen if, going back to the, the water articles? That if you came back and put together a position statement, said the planning board, this is the position of the planning board? That way, I mean, none, none of the articles are gonna go anywhere.
No, they're not.
And they, they all got major flaws, fails. They're gonna fail. But if it came back up, they would put us on record.
Yeah, I think from a policy perspective, it would probably be worthwhile to have something like that. I'd like to read what they've proposed, but then, um, I, I think, you know, this is personally my opinion, but I, I applaud the notion of trying to understand what resources we have, how they're limited, and then how we can use them, right? To me, that seems, it seems like a pretty basic.
Yeah.
Well, maybe that should be our position, exactly those words.
Yeah.
You know, it's just not, we don't agree with it, but we think before we do something like that, we should look at what our resources are. Because I don't-
If I heard them right, though, they're talking about maybe changing the nature of how politically, how, um, those resources are managed in town, right? In other words, creating an independent board.
Yeah, that's the third article.
That's the third article.
That's the third article.
As opposed to have the Board of Selectment Act as the water and sewer commissioners as well, right? Which, I think that's not unusual in towns either, right? I mean, there's, there's probably a mix of those kinds of things.
But that article-
I think so, right?
Yeah, there are in some, I mean, several towns, but, I mean, I think they were thinking that it's not properly written, that article, because it doesn't say-
No, I get, I get you. It may not be properly written, the question is, do we support that kind of concept, right?
So, so do you want to meet, I mean, we'll post you for six-thirty. Do you want to, um, send a draft of what you want the, um, draft, uh, position to say? And then we can-
If you send out the warrants-
I, I will, I'll send you the-
I'll draft something, and I'll send it around.
Okay.
Okay.
And then maybe we can discuss it at, before the town meeting.
Right, well, will be posted for six-thirty, so, you know. Okay, and the town meeting's November fifth, so November gets to be a busy month because November fourteenth-
Is that election day, the fifth?
Yes.
Whoa.
I believe so. Isn't it?
No.
Isn't that Tuesday?
Okay, so it's the next Tuesday, the twelfth is the election?
I think the fifth is election day.
And what are we electing?
Uh, I don't know, but there's, there's definitely election. Maybe there's nothing in town. I thought there was some state or federal elections.
I know City of Boston maybe, Brockton maybe, but I don't think here.
Okay.
And I don't think there are any state reps or senators.
I don't think there's any questions.
No. Planning and development?
So November fourteenth is a special, we've got a couple special permits that night. And then we're meeting November twenty-first too. And so we have a couple special permits that night. And December twelfth is, um, where we'll be hearing our definitive subdivision plans that are henceforth filed within seven months of your preliminary plans.
Really?
So we'll be-
Do you think that's actually gonna show up? Do you think those will show up?
We have two and a half of them already.
Really?
Wow, okay.
My understanding is you're only gonna get three. You're not gonna get the full four. But we, yes, we already have, um, some of them.
And are they pretty much bypassing the, the new rules and regulations?
It's a, it's a definitive plan. It's a subdivision. It's not, uh, it's-
But they file them so they didn't have to, have to meet the new Green Bush?
They file them to preserve options for development. We don't know what they really want to do on those sites.
Well, that's what I'm saying, that's what they're filing though, right? Is what they're going to do.
It's still the dummy plans, though.
No, no, they're, no, they're not filing what they're gonna do. They're just filing a subdivision to make it so that they can freeze the zoning. You have to follow the preliminary plan up with, within seven months with a definitive plan to get a zoning freeze.
That's what they're doing.
Are they gonna go through the same exercise and say they don't plan to build this?
I, probably.
Then I don't mind to vote for it.
Okay. All right, um, anything else, Karen?
I mean, so we remain pretty busy with, you know, stormwater permits and, um, same old, same old. And, you know, we are starting to, the long-range planning, based on what you've kind of done before, is we would plan to have a zoning workshop at the first meeting in January for potential zoning articles for a spring town meeting. And then your public hearing would be the first, um, meeting in February so that you can have a continued public hearing at the end of February if you needed it so that the advisory committee has all your information prior to them making their final votes because they've, I believe, town meeting for spring is plus or minus April thirteenth.
Ooh, it's early.
So it's already, I mean, we're already starting to work on things for the spring.
Budgets, et cetera.
Budgets, but, I mean, we're working, um, there's been a study committee working on a bylaw for North Situate. So, I mean, we have to just see where we are with respect to where things are going.
It would be good to, if we could get the water study done, if there are things that need to go to town meeting in the spring, right?
Good luck with that. I'll entertain Bill's motion.
I just want one question, sorry. Um, do, this just has to do with, um, like logistics for, um, the design review committee? Did, we, we confirmed last time that someone's definitely stepping down.
Right, so we're going to be putting, um, we're gonna be putting an article in the paper, et cetera. The, the term ends November tenth.
November, okay, so we should start trying to reach out to people.
Right, but we, I mean, we're just trying to, you know, we, hopefully we'll have something in the paper the week of November fourteenth.
Okay.
And then we'll try to have, um, a short, a fairly short period of time for, um, people to apply and then, uh, go from there.
Who's stepping down?
Laura DeLong.
Do you have, you have to put it in the paper like that?
No, we're gonna put it on the paper and the website. Is there any other?
No. Okay.
That's what you guys said last time. I mean, do you have any other?
No, 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 I think that's great.
Okay.
I'll send?
Second.
All in favor of Bill's motion?
Aye.
Where's Jen?
Where's Jen?
Are you signing up or volunteering for the charter committee?